Wow, I am completely sold. So where can I go by Navigate LA?
Silly average Joe. It's a free service provided to you by the city of Los Angeles and the Bureau of Engineering.
Are we finished?
For more information, log on to navigateLA.Lacity.org.
Hi, my name's Louis and I'm at Pan Pacific Park and you're watching LA City View 35. It's our city, it's our channel.
In LA this week...
Balancing development, preservation, while at the same time easing traffic problems in Tinseltown. I'm Gil Reyes with some bright ideas from the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce's State of Hollywood event. Strengthening relations between cops and communities. The focus of this movement that's taking place all across the country. More from National Night Out coming up.
Bike lovers can now take in all the sights of the San Pedro waterfront without driving it or walking it as metro ride sharing arrives at the port. That's coming up.
Hello and welcome to LA this week. Thanks for joining us, I'm Yana Kay. If you live or have driven around Hollywood recently, you've probably noticed all the construction cranes overhead. Well, that's because the area's building boom is in full swing. Gil Reyes hears from developers who answer some of their critics.
Have you seen it? The recently opened Dream Hotel on Selma and Coawenga. It's one of several new development projects in Hollywood and more are coming.
We also have a lot of housing that's under construction and as well as some new office buildings that are just being completed that'll bring new jobs here to Hollywood.
La Ron Gubler, CEO of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, gives us an update at the Hollywood Economic Summit. You could say Hollywood's construction boom actually began 15 years ago with the development of the Hollywood and Highland Complex. And since then, the building has not stopped. Currently, there are some 90 construction projects here in Hollywood that are either in the pipeline or in the planning stages. Of course, all this growth has its critics. Longtime residents who say development is pricing them out of the neighborhood. They've fought back at the polls and in court. But former area councilman Tom LeBonde reminds them, development has benefits too, like job creation.
There's this economic engine that does help people.
Developers also say the more housing we build, the more the cost of housing goes down because there's more available for everyone. But getting in the way, developers say, is the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. Developers behind Dream Hotel say the law needs to be reformed.
Anyone off the street can file a litigation matter on a SEQA. And then you have to challenge it. And that threat of challenging it could drag out some time. You have a threat of being able to get your financing or not on a project.
Has that affected you personally?
It's affecting us now, yeah.
In fact, two other Hollywood projects from Dream Hotel developers remain tied up in court. The city is updating a Hollywood community plan that will hopefully be adopted by the beginning of 2018.
We're listening to everyone and all viewpoints. That's why this plan actually preserves about half of the area with, in terms of keeping the residential neighborhoods intact.
While concentrating much of the construction near transit stops to encourage more public transit, less driving. In Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell also wants to add more traffic signals around development projects to help ensure safety. Heading over to the LA River where restoration efforts got a big boost thanks to $100 million. Gil Reyes has more on what the money flow could bring.
We could see soccer fields, hiking paths, and picnic areas here thanks to a newly approved state budget.
This is an important milestone for Los Angeles.
State leaders adding $100 million to the pot in plans to revitalize the LA River. Two public agencies will oversee the grant money, half of it going to the upper half of the channel, the rest going to the lower half. Money will be divided among river nonprofits, like Friends of the LA River. The group wants to rip out much of the concrete and restore the river to its natural state.
And it couldn't come at a more crucial moment. All across the country, our environment and environmental organizations are under fire. But our California leadership demonstrates over and over again its commitment and its sharing in the vision that we have as environmental stewards.
But some say revitalization and development will squeeze longtime residents out of neighborhoods.
This is just a beautification process to help the gentrification process that other communities around LA are feeling right now. We are being evicted from our house.
While others say opening up the river to recreation and development along 51 miles from Canoga Park to Long Beach is a good thing.
I know for me, as a girl from Bull Heights, connecting with nature helped me bring opportunities about what is possible and what and how you can actually play a role in changing your neighborhood and changing your environment.
Along the LA River, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The state also kicked in $51 million to help the city buy Taylor Yard in Cypress Park. Mayor Eric Garcetti has called the parcel "the crown jewel of the LA River restoration plan." Well, not in a galaxy so far away, but right here in LA. The director of Star Wars decides to dock the legacy of his empire in the city. Rasha Goel has more.
And we said from the beginning that the force was very strong here in Los Angeles. We said that we were a place that would get the job done and would open up our arms and our hearts.
Mayor Eric Garcetti is referring to opening up the City of Angels to the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art. The Los Angeles City Council recently approved the plans for the $1.5 billion museum funded by Lucas himself. The museum will be built in Exposition Park adjacent to Lucas's alma mater, USC.
This is probably from an individual family for a single museum, the largest gift in American history in a single place. We make history together because of the generosity of this family who understands what giving back is all about.
The five-story museum will look like a spaceship hovering above the park. According to Lucas, the museum won't only focus on film, but other forms of narrative art such as storytelling and painting. Lucas's personal collection of fine and popular art, including memorabilia related to his Star Wars franchise, will also be a part of the museum. All of this with one goal in mind.
To inspire people to think outside the box, to imagine whatever you want to imagine, to help build on the myths that bind our city and our people together.
George Lucas and his wife Melody Hobson chose Los Angeles over San Francisco for the museum's location.
This is where we were supposed to be. And I know it took us a couple stops to get here, but please know how much we appreciate the support, the enthusiasm, and the love that we've gotten from the city.
City leaders say the museum will not only be a global attraction, but will also expose local families and kids to the arts in new and exciting ways.
Art makes people from all races and all ages and all sizes and shapes. It brings us together. A lot of times, we don't even know it, but it makes us think. It makes us dream.
And this is one dream that will perhaps help inspire a new generation of dreamers. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
The museum's construction is scheduled to start by early next year with an opening date tentatively set for 2021. Turning now to LA Metro's Bike Share program, which has already taken quite a chunk of pollution out of the air, and it's just getting started. San Pedro becomes the latest city to get Metro bikes. Ana Marcos joins community members for a ride.
We're heading right through you. And I don't know how to use the brakes, so get out of the way.
That's County Supervisor Janice Hahn revving up. Other bike fans do last-minute checkups on their two-wheelers and some take a little test run. They're getting ready for a very special Metro Bike outing along San Pedro's waterfront.
Well, what kind of bike are you riding today and what do you expect to...
It's a Schwinn and it's an electric bike, okay? Because I'm an old man.
I'm supposed to be famous because I ride a skateboard sometimes.
But today, you're riding a bike?
Yeah.
Some of them think it's kind of weird to ride a bike, but I'm like, no dude, this is cool. Albert Einstein did it.
And with that, Einstein lovers, bike lovers, metro lovers, and non-brake users take off on San Pedro's first-ever Metro Bike Sharing ride. San Pedro now becomes the third community in LA to get the Metro Bike Share rentals. All you have to do is use a Metro Bike Pass card or a credit card and you're off.
I always see visitors either to town or coming off of the cruise ships, walking long, long, long distances to get to the restaurants or to get to Crafted. So I think they're really gonna love this Bike Share.
It's always good to ride a bike as opposed to driving and, you know, we're trying to get to zero emissions. Clearly, this vehicle is zero emissions.
We believe that the bicycle is a tool to decongest cities, to make them more sustainable, more equitable, and safe.
And there's plenty of bikes for everyone with 120 rentals and 13 bike stations all over the waterfront.
This Bike Sharing is really an important new mobility tool that will improve access to waterfront destinations.
Since it was first introduced in downtown LA last year, the Metro Bike Share program has helped take 471,000 pounds of carbon dioxide emissions out of our air. Now that's reason enough to start pedaling. I'm Ana Marcos for LA this week.
So far, downtown LA, Pasadena, and San Pedro have gotten the Metro bikes, with Venice next by the end of summer. For more information, visit metro.net/bikeshare. Also in San Pedro, they arrived representing 14 nations. When they left, they were all Americans. Gil Reyes takes us to a special citizenship ceremony onboard the USS Iowa.
Please raise your right hands and repeat after me.
Meet LA's newest United States citizens.
There's no words to describe how happy we are today that we are all becoming American citizens. And I feel like that's the dream of everyone here living in this country.
Fernando Manzano is among the 41 young people taking the oath of allegiance onboard the USS Iowa battleship in San Pedro. Their ages range between seven and 22 years old. They became eligible for citizenship when their parents were naturalized.
I am so honored and excited to say to you, greetings, my fellow Americans.
U.S. Senator Kamala Harris attends the ceremony. Harris, the daughter of immigrants herself. Her mom is from India, her dad from Jamaica. She tells the group that immigrants built this country and to exercise the rights as Americans.
Get involved. Attend town hall meetings or city council meetings. Run for offices yourselves. Vote. All of these are the responsibilities of the citizenship you have now earned.
New American Victoria Keller has enjoyed life in the U.S. for years now. But among friends and classmates, something's been missing until now.
For them, it's like you're not really part of the country, so it's nice to kind of just be like officially a part of the country.
Not to mention new privileges like the right to vote, to run for public office, to be eligible for federal benefits, and to be able to travel abroad for long periods of time without fear of deportation. San Pedro Councilmember Joe Buscayino is also here. Buscayino, a first-generation Italian-American.
It reminded me a lot of my family when they first came here to San Pedro, to Los Angeles. And their story is no different than our story. A story of opportunity, of faith, of love, of family. And this city of Los Angeles continues to welcome everyone from all over the world.
Onboard the USS Iowa in San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
LA's newest Americans come from Mexico, Egypt, Nigeria, the Philippines, and several other nations. Well, just like many of those new U.S. citizens, many come to realize the American dream. And as one family who came from Mexico shows us, the American dream is alive and well if you work hard. Rasha Goel has more.
In 1926, Mexican immigrant Ignacio Lozano founded La Opinión, which became the first Spanish-language print newspaper in the LA area. Today, the paper celebrates its 90th anniversary, and the Lozano family is being honored for bridging a gap through media.
It really wasn't until La Opinión existed that I think a lot of Latinos here in LA had a source of information and empowerment that was really needed.
The Lozano family received the Pobladores Award and were recognized as local trailblazers. In fact, not only is La Opinión the second-most-read newspaper in Los Angeles, it is the largest Spanish-language newspaper. Monica Lozano, member of the Lozano family and former publisher of the paper, remembers her grandfather Ignacio Lozano's legacy.
And the fact that he had such commitment and such dedication to providing news and information to the Latino community and that we can carry that on over three generations in 90 years is just extraordinary. So for me, this is a celebration of the founder of La Opinión, Ignacio Lozano.
Recognizing Latino media pioneers is part of La Plaza's mission to cultivate an appreciation for Latino history, art, and culture.
Our museum is dedicated to the founding of Los Angeles by the original Pobladores, the families who came up from Mexico in 1781. And we do that through exhibitions that we conduct here. We have permanent historical exhibitions that tell the history of Los Angeles. And we also have changing exhibitions that are historical or artistic in nature.
And by recognizing those who are making an impact in the community, as did the Lozano family. And for publisher Ignacio Lozano Jr., he says, "The mission was no longer to be a Mexican newspaper published in Los Angeles, but an American newspaper that happens to be published in Spanish." I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
The annual dinner is a charity event and raised $200,000 to support La Plaza's educational programs. Well, sure, Northern California is famous for wine country, but once upon a time, Los Angeles was primo for vino. Gil Reyes reports on some old-school winemaking LA-style.
Built in 1818, Avila Adobe on Alvera Street is the oldest standing home in Los Angeles. The site also shares history with downtown LA's last remaining winery, San Antonio Winery.
The actual original San Antonio Winery was actually here on site, but the grapes that you see in the oldest house in the city of Los Angeles at the Avila Adobe Museum is actually still producing grapes.
Enter LA City archivist Michael Holland. He's also an amateur winemaker. Holland and fellow vintner Wes Hagan decided to make wine out of the Alvera Street grapes. They shared their creation at this annual spirit symposium at Avila Adobe. Their wine, a classic Angelica, was the same variety created by Mission Padres over a century ago, back when Los Angeles County was the epicenter of winemaking, long before Napa Valley.
This is a very small, little hidden piece of Los Angeles' history. Southern California used to be, had more acreage and grapes and more wineries than Northern California until about the 1890s, when the property around here became more valuable for housing and freeways and roads and various things like that. We were making tons of wine at San Gabriel Mission in Los Angeles until we had a disease come up called Anaheim disease or Pierce's disease. That happened simultaneously with the gold rush starting in Northern California. So all the money, all the grapes moved north to Northern California while Southern California viticulture sort of languished and died.
But LA's link to the past lives on with these vines on Alvera Street. DNA tests show they're at least 150 years old, possibly the oldest grapevines in California. Los Angeles also still has San Antonio Winery on Lamar Street. Downtown's last remaining winery turns 100 years old this fall.
It is a part of the culture, a part of the history, what makes Los Angeles, Los Angeles. And the family has been here several generations and they wouldn't even dream of being anywhere else but Los Angeles.
Still the toast of the coast, with or without wine country. On LA's Alvera Street, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
And you can see quite possibly the oldest grapevines in California live, free, and up close at Avila Adobe on Alvera Street. Well, here's an important reminder as kids head back to school: watch the road, especially near school zones. Ana Marcos joins us from the valley with more. Ana?
Yana, as more than 55 million students around the country head back to school, educators and traffic advocates want to make sure they stay safe, especially here in LA. They have some tips for parents, students, and drivers. It's a stark and graphic demonstration. This is a kid's brain in a helmet, and this is the same kid's brain without a helmet after an accident.
What'd you see there? What'd you learn?
A brain.
And that could be your brain, right? If they have a helmet on, 85% of them are gonna walk away. Helmets save lives.
You don't really think about using helmets, so it's an eye-opener.
Bikes and helmets, just one of the many lessons, as the schools' "Drive Carefully" campaign takes off in LA and the country. It's an effort to get drivers, students, and parents putting child and traffic safety first as classes start up again.
Drivers through the summer haven't seen kids out on the street, so now it's going to be the perfect storm.
The campaign is a yearly joint effort by AAA, the LA Unified School District, and traffic safety groups. The biggest takeaway for drivers: always be on the alert for pedestrians and bikes. No texting and driving, and slow down.
If a car is moving at 40 miles per hour, there's only a 10% chance that that child will survive. At 20 miles per hour, that student has an 80% chance of living.
We know that taking your eyes off the road for just two seconds doubles your chances of being involved in a crash.
Parents should obey school traffic rules and pay attention to drop-off and pickup points. And kids, look before you step out on the street. Use a crosswalk, and if you're on a bike, wear a helmet. Close to 2,000 kids were injured or killed in California pedestrian accidents in 2015. Just about all of those could have been prevented. I'm Ana Marcos for LA this week.
For more information on school safety tips, visit AAA.com/schoolsafety. The LAPD considers deploying drones during selected tactical operations. Designers go for a walk on the wild side to benefit the LA Zoo, and Metro Ride Share marks its first birthday. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles Police Department took its first step towards starting a drone pilot program. LAPD Assistant Chief Beatrice Gormala presented the department's plan for a pilot program for limited use of drones to the Board of Police Commissioners. Gormala said the department plans to hold a series of public meetings to get feedback on the program, then draft official guidelines before bringing the pilot program back to the commissioners for approval. The guidelines the LAPD is considering would create limited uses for drones that would respect First and Fourth Amendment rights and that the devices would not be used for general surveillance. Criteria for their use would include high-risk tactical operations, risk of exposure to hazardous materials, detection of explosive devices, barricaded armed suspect responses, and hostage rescues. A special exhibit of international art, fashion, and film was held recently benefiting the LA Zoo and Botanical Gardens Conservation Program and to celebrate the zoo's 50th anniversary. Put on by Moda 360, the event featured a sustainable runway fashion show called "A Walk on the Wild Side," with creations by artists and designers reflecting the species, habitats, and conservation projects. The goal of the 2017 exhibit was to highlight sustainability and the importance of preserving the habitats and inhabitants of our planet. It's been one year since Metro launched its Bike Share program. Metro and community members came out to mark the occasion. Officials say there have been more than 180,000 rides on Metro Bike Share in the first year.
It's a celebration of Los Angeles making way and room for bikes as a mode of transportation.
Cops took to the streets recently not to make arrests, but to nurture trust and establish bonds with community members. Gil Reyes reports from National Night Out, where the public seemed receptive.
With LA City Attorney Mike Fuer up front, people marched to LAPD's Olympic Station for a night of bonding between cops and communities.
We feel your strength, we feel your love. We are only as successful as you and your partnerships allow us to be.
With food and fun, National Night Out gives families a chance to get to know their local officers and the problems they face. This summer, it's a spike in robberies, up 28% in the Koreatown East Hollywood area between June and July. Police say crooks are targeting people on cell phones.
So we have a big push about trying not to be distracted when you're out and about. Don't talk on the phone, you know, take the music off, be aware of your surroundings because most of the robberies that occur, they walk up behind you, they grab your phone, or they just get right in front of you, you have no idea.
Though gaining public trust is the goal, law enforcement continues to be plagued by bad press. Recently, former LA County Sheriff Lee Baca was sentenced to prison on charges stemming from FBI investigations into inmate abuse in his jails. And at LAPD, scandal in the cadet program. Several accused of stealing cars and equipment, one adult officer accused of sexual relations with an underage cadet. Despite all this, LA City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell strongly supports local cops.
Are there tragic issues with abuse of law enforcement? Absolutely. But it is an infinitesimal percentage compared to all of the good that are done by law enforcement.
I come to support my community.
Myri Alonso appreciates Olympic Station's free domestic violence classes for women.
I feel like the cops, they help people.
Joshua Pop says he'd like to become an officer someday. Of course, Olympic Division not the only LAPD agency doing this tonight, so are Devonshire Division, Foothill Division, and Wilshire Division among so many other law enforcement agencies across Southern California. Reporting from National Night Out, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Though Councilmember O'Farrell supports a full investigation into the cadet incident, he also strongly supports that the program continue. Support Studio City with a Neighborhood Street Fair, enjoy Disney's Moana on the big screen for free, and celebrate the unique flavor of Echo Park. All this and this week's Things to Do. Alternative Entertainment and the Studio City Business District in partnership with Councilmember Paul Krikorian present the Studio City Street Festival. Eat, shop, play, and support your local community with 60 vendors, great music, local shops, and restaurants. The festival takes place Saturday, August 19th, from 5 to 9 p.m. at 12001 Ventura Place. If you haven't seen Disney's Moana, here's your chance. Join this adventurous teenager as she sails out on a daring mission to save her people. Along the way, she meets a once-mighty demigod who joins her on this action-packed adventure. The screening takes place on August 19th at 10 a.m. at the Madrid Theater in Canoga Park, but you must register first. Visit bloomingfield.lacity.org. Watch your favorite bands play for free during Echo Park Rising, a neighborhood event that focuses on the music, creativity, diversity, and small businesses of Echo Park. There are multiple stages and activities throughout the weekend located on main routes of Sansa Boulevard, Glendale, Alvarado Avenue, and Echo Park Avenue. More than 300 bands will descend on the neighborhood of Echo Park for one free weekend of outdoor shows. In addition to the lineup of artists performing, shops, galleries, restaurants, all come together to celebrate the vibrancy of this eclectic boulevard. It all takes place on Thursday, August 17th through Sunday, August 20th. For more, visit EPR.LA. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
911 emergency, operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti. I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies. 911 should be used... 911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hola, soy Marisol desde Canoga Park, la ciudad toda americana. Estas viendo LA City View, Canal 35. Nuestra ciudad, nuestro canal.
Good morning. If everyone would please take their seats. Today is Wednesday, August 16th. I'd like to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonnabusque, Nocedio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carrasco, Corrian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
That would be approval of the minutes.
Mr. Sodio moves. Mr. Bonnens seconds. Next?
Mr. President, that brings us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Martinez moves. And Ms. Rodriguez seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that council reduce the lien amount for Item 1H to $930.81 due to receipt of partial payment. To receive and file Item 1F, inasmuch as the property was determined to be an owner-occupied single-family dwelling and thus exempt from lien processing. And finally, to continue Items 1C, 1G, and 1B to September 19.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Mr. Rue?
Mr. President, for 1J pursuant to the revised and updated Department of Building and Safety report dated June 30, 2017, I move to amend Item 1J on today's agenda to increase the total lien amount to $5,003.20.
Does he need a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, he's got that. So do we have cards?
Mr. President, we do have cards on that matter.
Okay, so continue.
Mr. President, Items 1 through 7 are items noticed for a public hearing. We do have cards on Items 1 and 6, sir.
Well, let's hold those items on the desk and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Drum roll. Mr. Englander?
Aye. Oh, you're holding all one. Great.
Okay, so we can continue?
Very good, sir. Items 8 through 36, our items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 8, 10 through 14, 18, 34, and 36 have been posted and circulated for council's consideration. And it's been brought to my attention that Item 17 should be held on the desk, sir.
Okay, so without objection. Let's also hold Items 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 as well. And let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Ms. Martinez?
Yes, Mr. President, can I call 32 special?
Then we can hold that one as well.
Okay, as soon as you vote, I have something else.
Okay. So on the—Mr. Buscaino?
Item 36, please.
36. Okay, let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Ms. Martinez?
I would like to send Item 21 forthwith.
21 forthwith. At Ms. Martinez's request. So without objection, so ordered. Continue, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. Items 37 through 43 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body.
Mr. President, we do have cards on all items in that section.
Okay, continue.
That brings us to Items 44 through 46. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I'll defer to Mr. Corrian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 44 and 45 are settlement proposals. Budget and Finance has heard those matters and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation to accept. Unless members have questions or concerns, that can be resolved—those can be resolved in open session. 46 is a proposal to reject a settlement demand that was also heard, and Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation to reject the settlement.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, you want to go through those items?
Mr. President, for Item 44, in the case entitled Bozanga versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $135,000 in settlement. For Item 45, in the case entitled Joyce Miller Zebrita et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is no final action required at this time. And for Item 46, in the case entitled George Diego and Alan Corrales versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
Okay. So on those items, there's no one on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, that brings council back to items called special.
All right. Okay, let's bring up Mr. Walsh. And I have Mr. Walsh on my screen at 1A, 37, 40, 42, 43A. And public comment. So, Mr. Walsh, if you please come forward.
John Walsh opening the meeting very sweetly. I'm always sweet. I sting, but I'm sweet. HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 1, this is a building and safety. Again, you do a good job on building and safety. I'm the one who's telling you all a bunch of crooks. You're all a bunch of white gay crooks. When you do a good job. I say you do a good job, and no one interrupts me when I—when I say that you're doing a good job. When I say you're doing a bad job, I get interrupted. Number 3, street lighting. Again, since you got rid of those carbon arc lights, which were the bane of my existence, everything has been fine on lighting. Number 7. This is $65 million here, $65 million there. After a while, it begins to add up.
Mr. President, 7 was voted on.
No, you gotta go to Items 37, 37, 40, 42.
Okay, well, that was—I should have marked that down, but Emerson College is a waste of money. Number 40, 42, this is a reward information. Again, you want to know how much you've given out in rewards in the past 10 years? Goose egg. Because everybody in this city knows that if you come up with any kind of information that leads to the arrest of this murder victim, of this person who killed this individual, that person will be killed by the gangs. The gangs like when I say this, because they want everyone to know that they mean business. And so that's what happens in that case. Number 40, 43, these maps. Some people say, "Well, what do maps mean?" What they do is change your zoning in the map. You don't—you don't get any notice about this. And then, all of a sudden, your nice little neighborhood—I'm talking about non-Jewish neighborhoods. Jewish neighborhoods, this doesn't happen in. Because Jews take care of their own people. The blacks and Hispanics don't.
Mr. President, the speaker's off topic.
Okay, number 4—this final maps. What happens is that they change the zoning, and all of a sudden, you see a high-rise being built next to your private home. And if you're black, you come up here, and you'll get licked by Mr. Harris Dawson. They'll—you know, pretend to be doing something, but they won't be doing it.
Let's give him his minute. Let's give him his minute for general public comment.
I'm telling you right now, the number-one thing here is the Olympics. That's where the money is, okay? Don't ever get between a Jew and the money, Casey Wasserman and the money. Miss—incidentally, Casey Wasserman is not his real name. He took his—his mother's maiden name, Wasserman. That's not his name. He changed it. He changed it. He spit on his father's grave, okay? But what—that doesn't mean anything. It's a good use of spit. And we're talking about tens of millions of dollars, which will be made long before the Olympics. We've got four more years of kissing Casey Wasserman's Jewish ass. And that's going to create a brown nose. I'm telling you right now that 100% Casey Wasserman is a 100% political scumbag.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's go to Mr. Herman. If I could have Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, if you'd pay attention to these items. Items 1A, Items 6, Items 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, A and B and C. And then your general public comment.
So now that we're here, in regards to the autistic man who was killed—no, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the shooting of a 24—no, I'm sorry, a 25-year-old gentleman by the name of Victor. But again, George Diego was a victim of the LAPD on Item 46. But the issue here is about Weezer relative to offer a reward for information.
No, Mr.—he's back on topic now. No, just stay on topic, please.
Leading to the identification of fucking apprehension, fucking convictions, and the fucking persons like Weezer that open up bars and responsible for the shooting of victims.
Now, come on, Mr. Herman. Just stay on topic.
Right.
I don't care what you say, but you gotta stay on topic.
I don't care either, but I'm just saying it for the record.
No, you're not on topic, so stay on topic.
And then in regards to Item 1, CD 12, West Granham Street, why can't they be forgiven? All these liens here should be forgiven. Why? Because they violate your due process right and the right to appeal the liability brought to you and your property by all these assholes that sit here and put these liens on your property, simply because you have what? Trash. They call your trash and your yard trash, but that's your personal property. And don't listen to the goats because they don't care. Am I on topic, Mr. Attorney?
No, you're not.
And then, when I go on to Item 17 regarding Plum, take the goddamn cards and let people be heard.
You can't, Mr. Herman.
Right.
Hold this time. I gave you the items, your last warning.
And now that we're on general public comment?
Now, let's give him his general—let's give him—let's give him his general—stop, stop, Mr. Herman. Okay, now, go ahead.
Nothing I say here is offensive, because, first of all, not one of you is a judge. And don't judge me for my fucking articulate voice and message to free assembly and free speech, rookie. So fuck this system you have, and fuck all of you for all the homelessness you've created. We don't want to have wine venues in the valley, bitches, because it creates more killings. John Walsh is always right. There's always killing due to alcohol and excessive drinking like Jose Weezer, the DUI capital of the world. So before you open up a bar in my community of Boyle Heights, fuck you, white nigger. No one threatened you at Plum. This is all I did, my constitutional right, and you threw me out of a public meeting. So on behalf of all the constituents of Boyle Heights and El Serrano-Lincoln Heights, fuck you, Jose Weezer, for the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Okay, Mr. Previn, give me Mr. Previn's numbers. Mr. Previn, 1F, 1I, 1K, Item 39, 42, 43B, and then general public comment.
Mr. President, in the meantime, there's been a request from a member to send Item 19 forthwith.
Without objection. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD 2. Busy, busy day. I was over at 6380 Wilshire, the Jameson property. Suite 800 is Carrasco's office. And I had a thought. I had a thought that could we do something nice for Rita Villa, who was on the cannabis—has just been appointed to the Cannabis Commission?
Would you, Mr—please, Mr. Previn.
That's Item 11. Okay, we can't do it. We don't—I would like to do something special for her. She's from our district.
No, Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, if you get off topic again, I'm going to have you sit down.
42 is fair territory. That's a reward for wrongdoing. There was a—some—I don't think it was the revolving—the store's revolving fund, but it may have been homicide. We're looking for the—we're going to post a reward. And then, if we can get the person to come in, it's going to be $50,000. It's $4.29 million that's going from the revolving fund to the general fund, just like that. So Farrell handling that. Now, Channel 35 is item number—you could figure it out. 29, I believe. Now, this one, sir, they're renting a new place over in Little Tokyo.
Mr. Previn.
Is that not on the agenda?
Let's go to his general—no, no, no, no. Let's go to his general public comment. You have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Mr. Previn, right now during the Brown Act? Okay, fine, I'm in my general public comment. And you are withdrawing my time. I'm speaking on items that are on this agenda, and it's inappropriate what you've done. And yesterday at the Ethics Commission, I wanted to bring to your attention—there was a little meeting about lobbyists. And the lobbyists spoke up, and they said these elected officials are forcing lobbyists to bring campaign contributions up in there. And we said, "Oh, yeah, right." But that's what they were alleging. And then, we tried to listen to it back on the Ethics Commission audio recording. You remember, "Hi, Heather"—that one, Heather Holt up there. And guess what? They have not posted that. So none of the newspapers—nobody could actually see it, Bloomfield. So would you help us with that? Channel 35 employees are being asked to reduce—members of the public to virtually inaudible and invisible. And now, Mr. Wesson is trying to get everybody to agree that it's a good way to go. These employees are being retaliated against. And 46 was a double—they shot a autistic guy, the poor cops, and then the poor cops got retaliated against. $4 million bucks in less legal settlement. They were getting pwned. Okay, we are getting pwned. The people are getting pwned. Bonnens, stand up for us. Buscaino, you don't want any criticism.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. That's your time. Do we have general public comment? Jacqueline Richardson? Do we have a Joyce? And Barton, please come forward. Just come to the center.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Beard, and I'm in the Marquise Harris Dawson District. And I'm here in support of home sharing. There should never be a cap put on home sharing. My story is, I have been self-employed for 46 years. And at this time in life, I'm getting to the point where I cannot do my regular job as a hairstylist. So now, I have started doing home sharing. And I think, once again, there should never be a cap put on home sharing. It is a way for people to earn a living, to be able to support—
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you. Ms. Richardson, and then is there Barton? Mr. Herman, control yourself. Go ahead.
Where do the white people live in downtown Los Angeles? As far as I can see, as one person, there's only 10% of white people circulating in the downtown Los Angeles area at any time of the day or night. I—as one person, don't see them on the red line. I don't see them. 10% on the red line, 10% on the purple line, maybe 15% or more on the green line, going to Pasadena, out New Azusa, during rush hours, maybe 30%. But on the other buses, going blue line, Long Beach, call-for-city bus going to Santa Monica, maybe 10%, except during the USC games. Then there's 50% white people on—on those lines, on the line going to Santa Monica. But generally speaking, they're not on the buses, and maybe 10% or less at all times. I'm only one person, so I don't see anything. I wonder, where do they live if they're not circulating just 10% or less downtown Los Angeles? Where do they live?
Good morning. I'm here on 13719 North DeFoe Avenue. And I was here last time, and, Mr. President, you took my name off the list, and now you are rescheduling. And I was wondering, why are you doing that? I saw you in the hallway. I tried to explain that to you. You got in the elevator, didn't want to talk to me. There is no elevator now. What are you going to do? Sir, you cannot deprive a citizen from speaking. I hope you understand that very clearly, and don't do that again. Now, I need—this item—I'm here because otherwise you might even take my name again.
Okay, that—any more general public comment? Okay, so that closes multiple, and that also closes the regular general public comment portion for today's agenda. Okay, I—I'm going to ask—we have folk that have been with us this morning, appointees to future commissioners and a future executive director. I'm going to need one more chair at the center table. I want—I think what we can do, let's do Items 8 and—is it 10 through 14? If I could get Ms. Packard and Rita and Misty and Robert to dock, if I can get it, and Victor, if you guys would come and sit at the center table. Okay, and as they're taking their seats, I think what we want to do now—Madam Clerk, we want to vote on a few items. I'm going to ask Mr. Englander if he'd come up—if he has a moment to come up to the president's chair. So Item 6, 37, 38, 39, and 40. On those items, would you open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, let's move to Items 41, 42, and 43. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, we'll go ahead and move over to Item 8. And, Mr. Wesson, if you can lead us off in this discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President and members. I rise today to introduce you to a group of folk that have agreed to work on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. And before I ask them to identify themselves and to give you a kind of a snapshot of what they hope to do and maybe some of the things that they've done, I just want to take a moment to indicate that Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Weezer, and I, through the Rules Committee, have worked for over a year, having hearings to try to put together lists or cannabis rules and regulations that we can present to this body. We've had dozens of hearings. 85, 90% of those hearings have been in the evening so that we could hear from our constituents, our neighborhood council folk, and from the industry. We have met with representatives from the states of Colorado, Washington, Oregon. We've had panelists from the cities of Seattle and—I mean, Denver. We've had folk from testing labs. We've had the Health Department. We have had very extensive hearings, and we are close to forwarding to this body a set of rules and regulations to oversee this new industry. The people that we have before you today are very critical for us as a committee to take the next step, because we need their—we need to hear from them. We need their opinions. We need their recommendations. We need their suggestions. So what we have is an individual cat packer who will be with your concurrent— So what we have is an individual, Cat Packard, who will be with your concurrence. The first executive director slash general manager of our Cannabis Regulations Department. I think what we, I think what we, in confirming her, I think we show the rest of the world what the values are for us on this council and for the people of the City of Los Angeles. She is supported by the industry. She also is supported by the community. She's, will be the first person selected to do this job that actually understands the industry. And she will be the first person of color. We also have, we also have five individuals to form the very first commission that will oversee this industry. So this is a first for us. We in Los Angeles make history today. One thing about these commissioners is that they are unbelievably intelligent. But when I was a kid, my father had a saying that common sense ain't common. They also possess common sense. Common sense blended with intelligence is exactly what we're gonna need going forward as we negotiate our way through a very challenging business and industry. I have to take just one moment and commend the mayor. Because I have supported his appointments in the past, but I am unbelievably impressed with these set of important appointments that we have today. Many of them have experience as former commissioners doing other things. We have neighborhood council people. This is a very diverse body. We've got a doctor from Kaiser, my favorite medical set of hospitals on the planet. And so they're, they're just a very good group of people. People that I think that we're fortunate to have, especially as the very first group of people that we're gonna appoint to oversee this very challenging industry. So with that said, Mr. President, what I would like to do is, I'd like to start off with Ms. Packard. Have her tell you a little bit about who she is. Then we'll start with Victor, and we'll work with each of our commissioners, and then you can have at it. But the one thing that I can say is, this is a very impressive lot, a very creative lot, a very diverse lot. I tell you all of the time that the winds in this country blow from the west to the east. I think we will be sending a message to the rest of the United States of America as to who we are, who we trust, and how we want to move forward with an industry that not everybody supports. But we were, we were instructed by the voters of the City, of the City of Los Angeles and the voters from the state of California, that they want us to do this. They want us to do this right. And I think that these people will give us the best opportunity to do that. So with that said, Ms. Packard, if you could start this off.
Thank you, Council President Herb Wesson, and thank you, Honorable Counsel. It is truly an honor to be here before you today, being considered to serve as the first executive director of the Los Angeles Department of Cannabis Regulation. I got involved in cannabis policy specifically because I understood the impacts that cannabis policy had had on communities, particularly for communities of color who has been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition and the war on drugs. I understand that communities here in Los Angeles and around the country have struggled with a lack of regulation, and that the voters of California and the voters of Los Angeles have decided to regulate license and tax cannabis businesses. I think that it's extremely important that as these rules are developed, out of the RAINN Committee, first and foremost thanking the members of the RAINN Committee for bringing us up to this point. But I think that it is extremely important that as this industry develops here in the City of Los Angeles, that it's done with consciousness, that it is science, data-driven based. I look forward to the opportunity to serve the citizens of Los Angeles and to create a department with public service to let community members know that we will protect their communities. We intend to protect children here in Los Angeles. We intend to protect the environment here in Los Angeles. And we intend to protect legal cannabis businesses that are serving our communities. Again, it is an honor to be here before you, to be considered for this position. And I look forward to working with all of you to make sure that as we embark on this new era of cannabis policies, that we do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could get, start off with, start off with Victor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, Wesson, and City Council members. I appreciate this opportunity today. My name is Victor Naro. I am project director at the UCLA Labor Center. I'm also an adjunct professor at UCLA Law School. And this is my 25th year in Los Angeles. I've lived here a quarter century, so it's my home now. And I've served the city in many ways, on prior commissions, with the Los Angeles Police Department Review Panel. I've also served on the Community Redevelopment Agency. And I look forward to putting my skills to use, my background in workers' rights, all my research and expertise on labor standards, and also my work with immigrant communities. I look forward to really working with my colleagues and working with CAT, and really make this industry a viable industry that's gonna benefit responsible employers, benefit workers, and benefit the City of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert?
Good morning, President Wesson, Honorable Council Members. It's an honor and privilege to be here. So great to be back. You know, I'm very mindful of the enormous task and responsibility that's before us. What we're trying to do here for the City of Los Angeles is truly unprecedented. But with those unprecedented challenges come unprecedented opportunities as well. And if we can get this system together and do it in the right way, that represents all of Los Angeles, I think it's gonna be a big win for this city. And you have my commitment that I will do all that I can in my effort and draw upon all of my perspectives and experiences over my career as an attorney, as a businessperson, and as a longtime community activist, to make sure that we balance all the competing interests to come up with a fair and equitable system for all of Angelenos. Thank you.
Doc?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and the rest of the council. As the President said, I'm a physician with the Permanente Medical Group that delivers the care for Kaiser Foundation Health Plan in the hospitals, and it's an honor to be here today. Thank you. I just hope to be able to bring an evidence-based and practical, common sense approach to what not only California, but what Los Angeles has decided to be able to do. And I look forward to working with not only CAT, but the rest of the council, the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita?
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here today and to be considered for this appointment. My name is Rita Villa, and I'm a CPA, and I have been in the accounting and auditing industry for over 40 years. I am, I've also served on the Neighborhood Council for almost 10 years and have extensive background in that. I've been their secretary and the chair of the Government Affairs Committee, addressing a number of the ordinance and rules and regulations, and doing most of the writing with respect to the community impact statements that we've submitted on those matters. I got, in November of 16, I was given the opportunity to serve on the working group that was organized by Council President Wesson's office, to participate in the drafting of the regulations and the regulatory framework for the cannabis industry. I consider the appointment to this commission as an out, the logical continuation of that work. Through that, participation in that group, I got the opportunity to meet with a number of entrepreneurs who are very serious businessmen, serving different aspects and segments of the cannabis industry. And I can see that the, through their work, through proper legalization and regulations related to this industry, those entrepreneurs will be able to bring jobs and revenues to our city, and that that's a very important aspect of what we will do. And I look forward to serving in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Misty?
Good morning, Council President, Council. My name is Misty Wilkes. I am a community activist, Neighborhood Council Board Member, educator, and attorney. I was also on Council President's Cannabis Working Group, starting in November. And through that experience, I was able to learn the depth of the industries, the depth of the issues that will affect this industry. And one of my skill sets that is often identified as a fault is my ability to see all sides of most issues. And I hope to be able to bring a balanced viewpoint to this discussion and to make sure that underrepresented neighborhoods are having advocate.
Thank you. Okay, members, I'm gonna call for the vote. So at this time, Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Congratulations, all of you are confirmed. Let's bring up item 17, as amended.
Mr. President, if I may, amending motion, Wes and Weesar has been circulated and is now before council for consideration.
Okay, on item 17, Mr. City Attorney?
And just for the record, the amending motion will send the item back to the CPC, where it will be subject to further comment later on.
Okay. So on that, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay, we have a card on item 1J. If I could get that, Stephen Lillis, if you're here, please come up to the center aisle. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, everybody. I'm here to object to a lien proposal from the Building Department. And I've been a property owner for 30 years in this county. And a tenant on my property made a false claim of inhabitability in order to be able to live on my property for a year without paying any rent. And he was renting a five-bedroom home in a very nice neighborhood. And while he was doing that, I was just recovering from a lawsuit where I prevailed against a predatory lender. So, once I got into the property, I made whatever corrections needed to be made. And with a house that size, there's always something to do. But this individual owes me $100,000. I've had to declare Chapter 13 bankruptcy. And I just want the council to know that there's no habitability issues on my property.
Thank you.
I've done my own inspections.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. So we will hold that for now. Yes, we will hold that for now. Was that item 1A, Mr. Clerk? Was it 1J? Okay, no, that's why I'm asking now. We're gonna vote on 1A, right? Okay, on item 1A.
And, Mr. President, again, that's as amended by motion 1A that has been circulated and posted for council's consideration.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Ms. Martinez, I believe, item 32.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, an equal day's work should result in equal day's pay. As one of the largest employers in the region, the City of Los Angeles should set the example by paying women an equal pay for the work that they do. And we can bring this by eliminating the salary increase requirement in our city employment application process. While our wage gap may be lower than the state average, systematic discrepancies still exist in pay for women throughout the workforce. Asking women's history puts women at a disadvantage with the employer when negotiating a starting salary. Eliminating this information will require an employer and any employee to negotiate salary based on merit, not on prior history. While we're starting with just the City of Los Angeles, I hope that we move, as it sets the example, for other employers throughout the city. We will look at the impacts of eliminating this question, and based on this effectiveness, explore expanding this to other employers. Lastly, to identify ways to close a gender gap, I recently submitted a motion that directs the chief legislative analyst to report to the City Council on where the gender gaps exist in our city, as well as identifying ways to close that gap and the budget impacts that it may create. Every woman working for the city should get paid the same amount as a man when they're doing the same exact job. And Los Angeles, Los Angeles may not be the first city to do this, but as the nation's second-largest city, we will send a strong message that women and men should get paid equally for the same work. I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. On this item, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Mr. Buscaino is... There he is. I believe, item 36, Mr. Buscaino.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is an important item. Before us was heard in the T3 Committee. I want to thank my colleagues on the committee, Mr. Kocori, Mr. Bonnet, for their support of advancing the Altacé project, and doing so by amending this lease and restating its terms to expedite project delivery. And anytime the port, or any entity comes to this body, to expedite development and construction and project delivery, to yes, 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 it's a win-win-win for this entire city, in this case, Altacé. Colleagues, just to remind you, Altacé is an innovation campus at the Port of Los Angeles that's gonna bring blue tech jobs to our waterfront, accelerate scientific collaboration, facilitates job creation specifically in the blue tech industry. And what Altacé will do, will bring people together to expand science-based understanding of our ocean. Altacé will also incubate and sustain ocean-related businesses, pioneer new ocean-related education programs. This project before us will continue to be a transformational project as we are developing the LA waterfront, diversifying our workforce, and putting the LA waterfront on the map. In addition, as you know, the San Pedro Public Market, the Newport's Call, will be advanced in the next few years. Groundbreaking already took place. We're moving dirt. Shovels are in place. We're bringing in housing of all income levels. We're bringing in more retail and dining opportunities. And Altacé will help sustain these critical development projects taking place along the LA waterfront. Altacé also serves as a key to establishing our own silicone harbor. Tenants include Catalina Sea Ranch, which focuses on sustainable seafood harvesting, Dr. Robert Ballard, who discovered the Titanic, Elon Musk's SpaceX, and also Boeing is very close on agreeing on an MOU that will help launch, use Altacé to launch their Echo Voyager, which will be used to map our seafloor. At this point, I'll turn it over to our Executive Director, Mr. Gene Soroka, who is accompanied by the Director of Commercial and Real Estate Development, Mike Galvin. Let me mention something. Gene, your presence here today is important to this entire body. I recognize your presence. You are America's Port Director. You're moving our goods and doing so in a sustainable and efficient way, and also at the same time, being an incredible neighbor to our port community in Wilmington and San Pedro, and an incredible neighbor to this entire region. I recognize your effort, and I know that you see this project as being a transformational project, as I mentioned earlier. And thank you for working with Altacé and its partners, and a true P3 project, a public partnership that is launching out of our waterfront. in a true P3 project, a public-private partnership that is launching out of our waterfront. I will turn it over for you for some comments, if I may, Mr. President. They have a slide, slide presentation, then I'll, I'll land the plane with some closing comments. Mr. Soroka, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman Buscagino, and we greatly appreciate your leadership in this and all areas in our harbor enclave. Mr. President, members of council, we simply would like to share with you today a true reflection of the spirit in San Pedro, Wilmington, Harbor City Harbor Gateway, and our harbor enclave, of a P3 relationship that has been developed between Altacé and the port and city of Los Angeles. Today with me, Mike Galvin, our Director of Commercial Waterfront, Real Estate, will share with you just a little bit of our depiction and aspiration of what Altacé will look like in the future. Mike?
Thank you, Gene. Members of council, Mike Galvin, Director of Waterfront and Commercial Real Estate with the Port of Los Angeles. As Gene mentioned, this is a transformational project of a P3 nature in the Port of Los Angeles, really revitalizing a portion of the port that has no longer been used for cargo operations for a number of years and can now be repurposed for a new project that will provide research and innovation center in the LA waterfront and provide an opportunity to bring more and more visitors to the LA waterfront. The location is City Dock 1, located in the Outer Harbor of the Port of Los Angeles. It's 35 acres of land, eight berths, 4,500 linear feet of wharf space, and 225,000 square feet of existing warehouses that will be redeveloped by Altacé. There are several components of the project that will move forward in a staggered nature as we go on to create a marine-focused research, education, and commercial campus on the LA waterfront. The scope includes an engagement center at Berth 56, which will include public access space, really engage the public in what is going on from a research and educational perspective in the rest of the campus. The Berth 57 SEMI headquarters includes an umbrella network for all of the local universities, including the city colleges, Cal State's, UC System, Occidental, and USC, to house their marine biology research and educational programs, and will provide different educational formats and curriculum over time as the development occurs. Berth 58 through 60 is a hub for research and innovation. You will have both for-profit and nonprofit organizations there, serving as subtenants of Altacé, which will provide income to Altacé to provide, back to the port, educational programming for K through 12 students. An important facet of this in the public-private partnership in that the port is providing relatively low subsidized rent, and Altacé is providing educational programming that will benefit the community and the region as a whole. Berth 70 and 71 is a to-be-determined development in the future, estimated about $198 million from Altacé, an undetermined amount from the port, that will provide expansion opportunities for the development in the future. There's a public promenade throughout the facility that will really tie in the LA waterfront, as it exists today, to the Outer Harbor and through Altacé, an important project for the port because the intent is to tie our entire eight miles of waterfront in San Pedro, together with waterfront public promenades on the water's edge. Lastly, a new project element in this project is Berth 57 and 1/2 is a new public access opportunity for construction of a Wharf Plaza and Educational Pavilion, where researchers and educators can actually engage the public in a stadium seating-type environment where they can see the research going on right behind them. So I'm going to run through a couple pictures here just to show the different elements. This is the Berth 57 and 1/2 Wharf Plaza Educational Pavilion, where Altacé will develop a stadium seating location there for researchers to provide lectures to the public and to students that are on the Altacé campus. Berth 58 through 60 Business Hub, this is where for-profit, nonprofit operations will occur. Commercial tenants will, will house their innovation center in this location. The Southern California Marine Institute Science Hub will be housed in about 60,000 square feet of warehouse space to provide that curriculum and educational base for marine biology for the local universities here in Southern California. And lastly, the Engagement Center, which will tie all these pieces together and really help educate the public in what is going on in this Innovation Center on the LA waterfront that will really take advantage of a huge port asset and create new diversified jobs along the LA waterfront that will bolster the remainder of the waterfront that we are developing from a visitor-serving aspect, and also bolster our cargo industry to help with different technologies and innovation that will allow that business to grow over time. The restated lease really delivers four things for us: an expedited development completion date. We have certain aspects of this being developed within the next two years, and we look forward to that completion following hopeful approval of this lease. Increased public access, which is extremely important to the port. Equal scope of public benefit and programs, so there will be no diminishment in that. And equal potential for economic activity at the site.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mike and Gene, for your presentation. Before we call for a vote, I do want to recognize the Executive Director of Altacé, Jenny Crusoe, who's here. Jenny has been a champion in this project since we launched this. She is working hand-in-hand with a number of our philanthropic community members. Thank you so much. And I do want to recognize also Wallace Annenberg and the Annenberg Foundation for believing in this project from, from the beginning stages. And also Mayor Garcetti, who has also embraced Altacé and has directed his port director to move forward. And anytime, Jenny, we're looking for shovels. We want shovels in the ground, and this restated lease terms will do just that, as you heard from Mike earlier. Huge game changer for the waterfront community of San Pedro and Wilmington, and looking forward also to breaking ground come this fall. Also want to recognize our federal government partners as well through the EDA grant that will help build out some of those peers, and looking forward to continuing the effort here in, in breaking ground on sometime this fall. Again, thank you so much for your presentation, and ask for an eye vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'd like to, before we vote, Mr. Buscagino, like to recognize Mr. Mitchell Englander.
Thank you.
So I wanted to just say something. You recognized a lot of people, Joe, and thanked a lot of different players that were involved in this. This is so cool. We can have a waterfront campus, I think you called it "blue tech." And, and you think about all of the environmentalists, the engineers, the, how much can be learned out of this campus and shared. But, Joe, this would not be happening if you were not the catalyst to make this happen. You know, we've heard for so many years, all of the ideas and concepts of not just the waterfront revitalization, building a phenomenal campus where we can bring so many different folks together to learn. I mean, I remember growing up as a kid in the valley and taking the bus on field trips to the port, and certainly over many, many years, hearing about these visions that just didn't really always seem to come together. And, and, Joe, I know, since you've been here, this has really been more than a vision, but an implementation plan. And I think it's really, really cool that, that you're doing this, and I'm glad we're all behind it. I think it's a phenomenal investment, and it benefits the entire region, and not just the 15th District, but even the valley. And because I know that kids today will be going down there on their field trips and learning and getting more involved and engaged. It's a great opportunity, and I thank you for it.
Okay. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to send that item forthwith.
Okay. And also on, I think it's item 1J, we're going to continue that item for 60 days until October 17th, correct?
Yes, sir. You can do that without objection.
Okay. So now, what is before this body now?
Mr. President, that would leave items 1D, E, F, H, I, and K to vote on.
Okay, let's put those up. Madam Clerk, if you'd open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted and referred. Announcements, members? Announcements, Mr. Cunningham? If I can ask all members to rise and ask Mr. Harris-Dawson to join me at the President's table. All members will rise for adjourning motions. It's my understanding that there are no adjourning motions today, so I would like for us to just do this one, a very, very special one. It is said that if you, through life, if you can touch basically one person and help one person, then your life has not been in vain. We in the African-American community lost one of our greatest lights, an individual who touched thousands and thousands of people, who came up during a time that was a challenging time at best for all people of color, an individual who was known for reaching out to assist everyone, regardless of where you came from or where you, or what ethnic group you belong to. In order to do some justice on a journey for this great man, Mr. Harris-Dawson and I have asked one of our early African-American council members to come and to say a few words, because Mr. Cunningham, who I'm joined with today, a very effective member of this council, a mentor to me, a mentor to Mr. Harris-Dawson, grew up with the great Albert Hudson. So with that said, I would like to ask you, councilmen, if you would help us remember this great man.
Thank you, President Weston. To President Herb, Weston, and the City Council, you do me a tremendous honor to present this adjourning motion in memory of the great Albert T. Hudson. Albert Hudson was a Los Angeles icon, who was the son of a Los Angeles icon, Mr. Civil Rights himself, Dr. H. Claude Hudson. At the age of three, Albert and his family moved to Los Angeles, California, from Shreveport, Louisiana, where Albert began his education in Los Angeles public schools, graduating from LA Polytechnic High School. He was raised in the tradition of civil rights, helping his father, president of the NAACP, recruit memberships. During World War II, he served in the US Air Force with the Tuskegee Airmen, flying 23 missions as a P-51 fighter pilot, escorting bombers in the Mediterranean Theater of Operation. He returned home after the war and earned his degree from UCLA, and subsequently his law degree from Loyola Law School. Attorney Hudson served his community and our city in many capacities. In 1963, he served on the Los Angeles Police Department Commission. And in 1966, he became the president, the first black to serve as president of that commission. Upon becoming president of the NAACP, he resigned the commission because he felt he could not serve the best interests of the department while serving the interests of his community. Albert also took over the business, over the reins, as CEO of Broadway Federal Bank, which had been founded by his father to provide loans for blacks and Latino families to receive financing for their homes and businesses. Additionally, helping black churches with loans, such as Ward AME, Second Baptist, and the church I presently belong to, Lewis Metropolitan CME. Albert Hudson will be remembered for his humility, his kindness, his caring, his commitment to justice, and his commitment to this great city of Los Angeles. Mr. Hudson was preceded in death by his renowned wife, Marilyn, who also served the city. He is survived by his daughter, Karen, and his son, Paul. And I would respectfully ask that the council adjourn in his memory. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilman Marquis Harris-Dawson.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmen. Members, seeing that there are no additional adjourning motions, then this council is adjourned. Again, thank you, Councilman Cunningham.